Call the meeting to order, and we've got some old new business. I guess the first item is that we need to appoint a new planning commission secretary.
Yes.
Stand in.
So as our bylaws require, the secretary signs plats. So I recommend you appoint me in the interim to be able to sign plats until we feel what is Allie's position.
Do we need to make a motion? Or do we?
Yes, please.
Do we have a motion to appoint Hunter as interim?
I make the motion to appoint the planning director as the interim.
Second?
Second.
Say, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
And we also, as old new business, have an extension request. Hilltop subdivision Phase Two, that was the eighth lot, did annex into the city. They did receive a one year, but they are under construction. We don't see a problem. We're granting a six-month extension for that final plat.
So that's in addition to the one year?
Yes.
And do we have, what is our, our typical is just to do one year, but there's, would you refresh my memory as to what our?
We've asked this question, so as long as everything's under construction, one year has been kind of a given, and then under circumstances in the past, there has been granted additional time. Typically don't like to go a second year. So six months falls within, I think, what we've done in the past.
Okay.
I hope we grant an extension of six months to the final plat approval for SD 21, 21-1.
Second? Do we have a second? Sorry.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Can we have some discussion, please?
Oh, sure.
Have they been granted an extension prior?
Yes, so.
So this is their second extension?
This is the second extension.
And how long was the first extension?
One year. So this is the second of two phases? So, yes, and there was some, thank you, Mike. So there was some delays. As you might recall, this was originally in the county. They did annex in, created a PUD, so that created some of the delays within there. So I think that's, that getting that formalized is certainly part of the delay and reason how we support the six month.
You do, you do have a recommendation for approval as to the extension?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry, we should have had that, I should have asked for discussion before we had the first motion, but since we have a motion and a second, can we go ahead and vote, or do we need a restart?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, so we just need to approve the minutes from our last meeting. Has everybody had a chance to review the meeting, the minutes? And do we have any changes or edits or revisions? If not?
I move to approve the minutes as submitted.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
And we have item A that we can jump into if you'd like to introduce.
Item A, UR 2302, request of media com for utility review and approval of underground installation of fiber. Hunter, will you walk us through it?
Yes, ma'am. So this is a utility review, and it encompasses basically two subdivisions y'all might be familiar with. It's Twin Beach Estates and Live Oak Estates on the map, and these are two relatively new, Twin Beach Estates, almost built out, I believe. I'd say 90% of the lots have homes on, no homes have begun, and Live Oak Estates. So while a little unfortunate, we just got everything kind of finished up, you know, somebody's going to go in with construction, but that is the way fiber and telecommunications is working. They are not installed prior to moving in. The area shown on the screen is where the, the coverage of this utility review will be. We don't have any special notes. I just will always remind the applicants that 750 feet max per day is what we can locate, and want to make sure people understand what methods are to be used. We've had a couple of subcontractors tear up some of our roads recently using methods that are prohibited, so want to make sure that boring is done when appropriate. But other than that, I think this is pretty standard, so if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. But we do recommend approval of this utility review.
Do you have any questions for Hunter?
Hunter, you say, what's, it says your recommendations, approval with condition. What's your conditions? I don't see any listed.
Up on the screen, you'll see the 10 conditions there. That's pretty much on any utility review, we have those standard conditions. Nothing, if there's something unique about this location, we might add a 11th or 12th condition, but this is our pretty much standard list of conditions, just to make sure applicants are aware. And all of these will be coordinated by a right-of-way inspector.
Any other questions or discussion? Otherwise, we take a motion.
I move that we approve UR 2302 for media com. Subject, staff recommendations.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we have ZC 2301, a public hearing to, for the rezoning of property to B2.
Right, and Casey's got that, of course. Ms. Casey, files.
All right. The applicant, Kenneth Cleaven, on behalf of the developer, Encounter Development, is requesting to establish initial zoning of B2 General Business District concurrent with conditional annexation into the City of Fairhope. The property is approximately 1.16 acres and is located near the northeast corner of State Highway 181 and State Highway 104. So here are some contextual maps where you can see that the surrounding properties are zoned B2, as well as the conditions of the site when the time the picture was taken. Since then, the building has been demolished. The subject property is currently outside of the City of Fairhope's municipal boundary and is zoned RA. The property is bordered on all sides, as I said, by B2 property within the city limits, and it is located across the street from the Publix Development and to the south of the approved Harvest Green and Rockwell Place projects. So according to the comprehensive plan from 2015, there is a node located at the intersection of 181 and 104, and a BT zoning designation would be consistent with the existing zoning districts in the area. It is important to note, though, that this is a straight rezoning request, and it does not include a site plan for intended uses. Future uses, if approved, shall meet the City of Fairhope's zoning ordinance requirements. We included in your packets the, the use table, and it is shown on the screen. As such, staff recommends approval of case ZC 23.01 with the initial zoning of B2 General Business District. Staff would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Do we, what action do we, are we being asked to take on the conditional annexation?
So you would be a recommendation to the city council for the zoning. The conditional annexation gives both the city and the applicant a chance until that happens. If they don't get the zoning they want, they can back out of the annexation.
Okay.
So the planning commission is making a recommendation for the zoning, and they will handle the annexation portion.
Okay. Does anybody have questions for Casey?
Does everybody know the historical significance of this property?
This isn't the movie set, is it? I thought this was the one before the movie set. It's the shacky one.
Look at the, look at the lease, or encounters. Who is that?
So I thought the movie set was down the road.
It is.
Yeah. The house is still there. I was by that site this morning.
Yeah.
House is still there.
So the.
It's not the same place?
No, the house sits about right here on the larger property. But we have gotten a lot of questions about that. And as you might recognize with the name, Cleaven Properties is the one who purchased the 35 acres, had that annexed in. This property is, was now available, and he's purchased this with the intent of kind of wrap it into the same project.
So they're just messing with us with the Encounter Development.
It wouldn't have affected my vote.
I see.
I would have been sad if they had torn that down.
Yeah, there's a scalded earth back there from where they landed. And I will say, you know, we do not know what the site plan for this will be. We've had some conversations, and just to let everyone know, they are working to, their intent is to save that building, maybe move it to another portion of property, another site on the property, but they are working to save that home.
But that's.
Because it is significant. It's not this home.
Okay.
This home is gone.
Yeah.
So, and you can see that property line sticks out in the middle of Highway 181. There is the survey, this is the legal boundary right now, but even the survey references a future devising line, so probably what the property will be after right-of-way acquisitions will follow this red line, and you can see where the drainage came around. So I could easily see this as a follow-up subdivision being merged into that greater 35 acres. But for some reason, this lot did not get the acquisition that the larger pieces of property did when Alda was making improvements on 181.
Do we have any other, otherwise we'll open the public hearing. Does anyone in the public, would anyone in the public like to speak to this matter? Close the public hearing? Do we have a motion?
Motion, Madam Chairman, Chairperson, Chairwoman?
We don't need to belabor this.
KZC 2301, Cleveland annexation to B2, I recommend, that we recommend to the city council approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Okay. I know you can't resist. So item SD 2305, a public hearing, we have a public hearing to consider the request of Dewberry on behalf of North Hills at Fairhope for final plat approval of North Hills Phase Two.
Me again. Thanks, Casey. All right. The owner is North Hills at Fairhope LLC. The engineer and applicant, as you said, is Dewberry Engineers. The application is for a 63-lot subdivision located on the north of US Highway 104, north of and adjacent to North Hills at Fairhope Phase One. The subject property is zoned R1 and is within the City of Fairhope municipal limits. The preliminary plat was approved at the October 2018 Planning Commission meeting with case SD 18.35. Here's the contextual zoning map, as well as an aerial of the site, pre-development. And then here's the preliminary plat, including the site data, both of which are in your There were a couple of remaining items from the punch list that were, invoices were provided to staff. Two chimney seals and one rain stopper were not installed at the time of final inspection. The materials had been delivered to the contractor, and the installation was pending at that time. All fire hydrant road markers were not installed, but an invoice was provided. And then the aerator installation was pending, the installation of power services, and an invoice was provided for that as well. The applicant has requested a waiver. Speed humps were not installed per the preliminary plat-approved design. They're requesting a waiver. They state that the traffic calming devices are not needed based on the distances from the nearest intersections and stop signs. They propose the installation of two additional speed limit signs in lieu of the preliminary plat requirement. Per the developer, the additional speed limit signs have been ordered and shall be installed promptly, and they can speak to that as well, they are present. All right, and those are the three locations of the proposed speed humps that were not installed. Right, and here we have a drone, or drone footage of the site.
And this was a little old, so that's been cleaned up. This was kind of when we flew it more of our inspections, so you can see some of the sidewalks still have, have been cleaned up since then. So I wanted to give you a whole idea of what this looks like if you didn't get a chance to visit the site.
All right. There are a few follow-up activities required by staff and the applicant. We will need a copy of the recorded plat. The final plat must be recorded within 120 days after the date of final approval. We'll also need a copy of the recorded O&amp;M agreement, and then the maintenance and guarantee agreement should be executed by the developer. The mayor signs this document to fully execute it. And then there's a couple of notes on behalf of staff to make sure that it's executed correctly. It's also worth noting that the performance bond was not required for this project. Sidewalks and street trees were installed prior to final plat application. So as such, staff recommends approval of SD 23.05, North Hills at Fairhope Phase Two Final Plat with the following conditions: the installation of the remaining punch list items, as well as completing those required follow-up activities. The applicant is present to answer any questions that you may have.
So does anybody have any questions for Casey before, I guess we'll do a public hearing, and then have the developer come up?
If you don't mind, let me.
Okay.
Supplement just a little bit.
Sure.
Should you choose to approve, I would ask you, let's vote separately on the waiver request, and just a little bit more information about that, and why we do support that to look at this site plan. So traffic calming, when we, is a term we usually use 660 feet. If you have a straight road, 660 feet. This was approved because of a lot of the environmental, there is no interconnectivity here, connectivity of roads. So we do recommend that. The, what was specked out on the plans was an asphalt speed hump, and those are not, those have become a maintenance problem.
They're loud.
And they're, well, they, they sink, and they become non-effective.
Like in Magnolia Springs, the residents complain about the landscape trucks going over, every landscape truck with a trailer goes over it and goes, "Kunk, kunk."
Yes. So I think this is one of those things, really, at the early stages of preliminary plat, we really need to look at traffic calming and use the methods that work better than this and are not maintenance of traffic islands, you know, choke points, things like that, incorporated into the design. But in this instance, you know, the speed limits are not, signs are not a traffic calming device, but we do support the waiver, but I would ask if you'll want to approve that, to vote on that as one item, and then the, the actual case as the second item, if the waiver goes through.
Is, just to clarify, is there, traffic calming, is that a best practice, or are there's requirements for that every?
We require, it's a little vague, and what I'll tell you is, on these asphalt, we leave a lot of flexibility up to the, the designers of a subdivision. The asphalt speed humps are something even our public works have said, you know, those are really a maintenance problem, and they don't, they don't work. We've got one that was installed less than a year and a half ago, and it's already about two, you know, maybe an inch high, so gets rut. It becomes a maintenance problem. So I think we, we need to add a little bit more information in our subregs, street details about exactly what we want to see, or at least have a little bit better input on the front end in the, the design of a project, is.
Are the non-asphalt the ones that you just stake in?
No, there, there's so many options for, you know, a lot of our projects you see will have traffic islands, so it creates a diversion, choke points that, you know, you can integrate sidewalk, crosswalks, in a choke point. There's, there's other tools you can use instead of just a asphalt speed hump. So I think we need to look at, at those options, and if we need to, you know, require those, we can, but that would require subdivision amendments in the future.
Could we make up like a list, kind of like we did for the LID, where we give you so many different options, and depending on what the development, what matches the development or the traffic study, that where they get to pick those different?
Sure. Yeah, there's DOT standards for some of those, you know. I'm a little hesitant to always say you have to use these, because it can stifle some creativity.
Right.
You know, I mean, I think there's a couple of locations here that could have worked, been integrated with traffic or landscape and sidewalks, that would have really looked good and, and accomplished the same task. But that, that's something we can certainly discuss in, in future amendments, not being tied to any particular project.
I think we don't want to get in the habit of approving something with a particular type of traffic calming, and then having at the end, when you have really limited options, to do something else. You know, I'm not necessarily opposed to this waiver, I just don't think we want to make a habit of it. That would be my concern.
Yeah.
We'd also like to point out that if our public works department down the road has, gets concerns from people that live in the neighborhood.
You can add them.
That the asphalt speed hump can be added at a later date. It's not a, it needs to go in before development is finished, before houses are built and that thing. So if there is completely built-out subdivision, and we see a safety concern, they can be added back in.
Let me clarify, that's not a, that's not a public works decision. As a committee, and that goes before the council, the process for that.
Adding it in the future?
In the future, yeah.
Okay.
And there's, there's bolt-down options, there's, there's other after-the-fact options for that.
Okay.
But.
Yep, should we open the public hearing? Is there anyone here, and then we'll take questions from the public, and then afterwards the developer can come up to address those questions, and we'll have questions for them. Is there anybody here tonight who would like to speak to this issue? Not issue, item? All right, everybody's just.
I also want to mention that, you know, I, I do want to thank, because as you, you know, we've, we've made sidewalks and street trees installed before final plat. That was not required here, so a little accolades for, for installing that work before. I really appreciate that, understanding kind of the challenges we're dealing with with some of those installations, so.
Absolutely.
Things where it's due.
Yeah. Okay, well, we'll close the public hearing, and if the developer would like to, to add anything or, or speak to this.
I mean, discussing these speed humps and all, I mean, we've had, had extensive conversations with Hunter and John Thomas out there, you know, about it, and the distances didn't make sense, or didn't fall within the guidelines, am I correct there, for the cut-through streets and all? I mean, we'd be glad to put them in, we would rather not, and we all agree that we don't feel like it's necessary, and so, you know, we're going to put some additional speed limit signs out there to help cover it. But again, there's no connectivity to this development, which is a little unusual in Fairhope and all, based off of wetlands and Auburn's property and such as that. We just didn't feel like it was something that was really necessary, you know, and it was kind of unattractive, too. And we talked about it, too. I mean, in the future, I think coming up with a plan for other type of calming devices made a lot more sense. This came about pretty much after we had the streets in and all, and we weren't in a position to, to make those changes at that time. But any questions for you guys?
All right. Thank you. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I just want to say, Ms. Chairman, or Ms. Chairwoman, I agree, we can always retroactively put in speed calming devices, and we don't need to make it a problem before it is a problem.
Mm-hmm.
It might be a problem, those people that live on that circle may want to get to work a little, and I live in a neighborhood that's not, there's no connectivity. We actually have two speed humps, but with a private street, and we were able to put them in there, but that was kind of targeted at a few select individuals. You remember that?
I have a 16-year-old.
It's a long time. It is right in front of his house, actually, many years ago, but, and they're not that attractive. I don't disagree with that. They're a nuisance, but we can always, you know, and thanks for your offer to put the additional speed limit signs in there, and we can always, to your point, go back and reevaluate. The citizens will let us know if it's a problem, and they will come to the committee and, with a petition and demand one, but I think it may not be right to put that in before it's a problem, because it's, this is a very attractive subdivision, by the way. I think it's really nice, and it would detract.
Mm-hmm.
So for that reason, I'm going to make a motion to grant the waiver.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that was one thing, to grant the waiver, and then does, we need a motion to recommend approval of the final plat?
I'll make a motion to approve the final plat.
Second.
With. With the, with the conditions. Let me go back.
There's five, five to 10.
Were there conditions?
There were two.
So, here you go, yeah, here you go. There's the, those two conditions, if you could just.
Yes. Make a, make a motion to approve final plat, condition, meeting the two remaining conditions. I will also state that I did talk to our right-of-way supervisor about this today, and he's satisfied with the progress that's been made, so he's good with it.
You're amending your motion to approve with the two conditions?
With the two conditions, as recommended by staff, yes.
Thank you.
Do you still want a second?
Second.
And Holly seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you. Oh. I could do this. Yeah, so next item is SD 2306, public hearing. It is about the hearing to consider the request of SC Civil on behalf of 68 V Overland Villas LLC for the final plat approval of Overland Town Homes.
Okay. Good evening. Like Rebecca said, the applicant is 68 Ventures Overland Villas LLC, Aaron Collins with SC Civil is authorized agent, and Larry Smith is the engineer of record for the project, both of which are here. So this is for a 16-unit MOP on approximately 2.42 acres, and it's located on the south side of County Road 48, also known as Fairhope Avenue, and east of the River Mills subdivision. It's currently zoned PUD, and it was actually annexed in the city in June of 2021, and it's to be known as Overland Town Homes. So that's what it looks like pre-construction. Not anymore. There's the site plan. There's a site analysis data and kind of the site plan that has the green space credit and the green space. You can see that. As for utilities, water and sewer is being taken care of by the City of Fairhope. There is a 55-foot utility easement, you can see on the site plan, because they're not taking all of them. So for example, the city, the sewer, the city excepting the sewer is the sewer main between Manhole 1 and Manhole 2, which is kind of highlighted right here, because they were hard to see, and if you don't know what MH1 and MH2 is, that's what that looks like. Power is provided by Baldwin EMC, communications AT&amp;T, trash pickup will be waste management, and they actually do have a dumpster located there, you can see on the site plan, and an original maintenance bond and maintenance guarantee agreement with an exhibit is showing what is to be maintained by the City of, City of Fairhope Water and Sewer Department shall be required prior to resolution of accepting, going to city council, and shall be required as a condition of approval. So we have some of those, but they're not fully executed yet, kind of like how Casey mentioned in hers. So traffic study was not warranted. The drainage travels west to east. SC Civil stated previously that the terrain of the site falls from west to east and just discharges into an existing floodway. Water will be collected in a series of inlets and underground drainage. The underground drainage will discharge into a proposed wet pond on the east side of the property before discharging into the floodway. So the storm system does have inline storage. We're not clear about how the ponds to maintain at static water level. Could have glazed over that reading it, but Larry and them are here to, to tell us about that. Was designed landscape, did the landscape design for 1.66 acres, and everything's actually installed as it should be. And there's the landscape plan, just with the different, the plant schedule, the flavors of plants they put out there. We did, on some of the site visits, and we do have some pictures today, too, initially had a safety concern regarding the pond and the proximity to the back patios of the eastern set of buildings, which in the vertical one, you can see the green that's highlighted, that's the back. that's the back patio to the buildings, the graphic on the left. So the distance from the patios to the pond edge is less than 14 feet and the slope and amount of green space on the site did not actually warrant a fence around the entirety of the pond. However, we did make a mention of it and the applicant has agreed and did install a fence around a portion of the pond that does back up to those patios. And we'll see some pictures of that in a few seconds.
What kind of fence?
It's actually chain length, black.
Vinyl coated.
Yeah.
You'll see it.
Yeah, we got pictures.
You got it in your package.
It's in your package.
It's not, we just.
It is.
We just did it today. I put the invoice in there.
We've actually got some photos of it installed.
Yeah.
It's a black, a black vinyl coated chain link.
Thank you, Holly. Here's a little, so we all love the flyers, so here is a flyover of this one, too. So there's the pond, you can kind of see the proximity of what we're talking about And then you can kind of, you can see the construction, how it's, what it looks like. Don't get sick. Right. And okay, we're done. Yeah, we're, our new toys, yes.
I really like it, I think it's great.
It's kind of fun, right? Because you see the over, you see the aerials at the beginning and there's no construction there, so it's kind of, and then, yeah, in real time. Okay, so to, in order to close this out, the applicant will need to complete the following requirements. Provide a maintenance bond and agreement for utilities being accepted by the City of Fairhope, which they have done, and we've gone back and forth about it, just need an exhibit with visuals on it, so we know what we're accepting. Provide a copy of the recorded O&amp;M agreement. Record a copy of the as-built plan with a corrected property zoning as PUD in the site data table. It had unzoned in some of them, so figure that out after your guys' packets went out when I was looking at it, so there you go. And then a specific note on the recorded as-built site plan, pursue it to our subregs. It reads, "A property owners association is required to be formed and the POA is required to maintain any and all stormwater facilities and structures located outside the publicly accepted right of way." And then another specific note stating that the internal right of ways, roads, easements and drainage facilities are private and only maintained by the POA, blah, 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 basically saying they're responsible and we're not. Yeah. And this is actually taken today with some sun. And I don't know, can you guys, do you guys see the pictures up there? Do you see the yard art, the hubcaps already by the tree? I like that.
That's right off your head.
Solid. But you can kind of see the fence there, right? It's not around, and then there it is again. And they've already got some stuff on the fence, which I liked as well, so.
The buildings are still under construction.
Yeah, they are. Right. Yeah. Okay, so going back and forth with SC Civil, which has been really helpful, we did have some recommendations, but we've taken care of some of them. There was a situation in the meter boxes, but we got the AOK on that from our utilities folks this morning. So I kept install fencing for safety around the pond, because it is not around the entirety of the pond and we, like I said, the slope and the tree ordinance and some other things didn't warrant that for us, but that's something that you guys can consider, obviously. And then to complete the aforementioned follow-up requirements.
Does anybody have any questions for staff? I don't know if this is a question, but I really hate that we had, that we got to a point of it, you know, of the pond being green space, but being so close that it's a problem and then having to put a fence and it just.
Yeah.
Doesn't feel like green space.
Right, and that was, I believe done it the first time, right? I mean, when it was given the credits, the pond as the green space credits, that was already inherited it that way.
Yeah, I mean, and that's certain, you know, things we look at and adjust if we need to.
Yeah.
Could have requirements of separations from buildings to top of ponds or certain things like that.
Yeah.
I think it's worth, not really for this item, but for the future, like we discussed, I think it's really worth us looking at some precedents and trying to figure out how we can, how we can better clarify pond slope and what's a usable pond and what's not and what's a safe pond and all of that, if we can get that into our zoning ordinances.
Agreed.
Does anybody have any, does me have any questions or comments for staff?
Doing a good job.
A little slow, it's been a while. This is a public hearing, so would, does anybody here from the public who'd like to speak to this item? This is weird.
Yeah.
It's like the opposite of the other times.
It's a storm brewing.
Yeah. What is everyone here for? No. Okay, we closed the public hearing. Would Larry, would you like to speak on behalf of the developer?
Wait, can you speak to the static?
Yeah, yeah, that.
So.
The question about the water.
Yeah, the pond is aligned pond, they line it with bentonite, which will keep it from infiltrating. We have had to pump down the pond a few times, so if you've gone by and see that the pond was dry, that was the reason, not because it couldn't keep the static water level. It was, when we did one of our inspections, we noticed mitered in section wasn't poured, so they had to pump it down to be able to do that. And then also for us to inspect that it had the required volume underneath the water line, because that's part of the water quality component. And so those were the reasons that the water level was drawn down at different times throughout construction.
And that's not on a well that's tied to irrigation?
Irrigation.
Okay, so there's a water source if it all evaporated.
If it all, if we get a drought, there's a water source as well.
Anybody have any other questions for Larry? All right, we'll entertain a motion if there's no, nobody drank their coffee tonight. Very pleasant.
You're just doing such a great job that you're getting all questions.
You're all just so confused about whether I'm a chairwoman or a chairperson or you can't think about anything else.
I can't quite get it straight, but I'll get there one day.
How about just a chair?
And if, we may, just, and just before we make a motion, you want to be clear for our minutes, because we're struggling, we're going to be struggling a little bit to get some minutes, too. So if we can be clear, I think it's okay to take the fence condition out altogether. Obviously, phase, the condition one is out, water and sewer has blessed those installments. So just to be clear on the follow-up procedures, that's the only condition there, so the follow-up requirements of the applicant, that's the standard closeout procedures of the bonding and recording of plat.
So number three is the only remaining recommendation, condition?
Yes.
I move, we recommend, we approve final plat approval for 23.06 Overland Town Homes, subject to staff recommendation number three.
All right, all in favor?
So.
Aye.
Let's have a discussion for a moment.
Sure.
You gotta discuss before we make the motion.
No, you do it after the second.
Oh, okay.
You gave me the opportunity to tell you that, I didn't correct you the first time, but I'm going for this this time. Removing the installed fencing, if you remove that as a condition, is that supposed to be a permanent fence that's supposed to stay with that property forever? If you remove that as a condition, does that remove the requirement to have a fence there in the future?
I would say no, because it's already installed. If it, if we were working toward, they had it as an invoice, so just like some of the other conditions, before, it was kind of last minute, you know, getting that material in, could it get installed before this meeting?
Storm comes along and blows it down, they don't have to put it back?
I think we can, I think it's safer to leave it in there.
I'm not sure if it's on the as-built, but it can be added to our as-built that's being recorded, that gives y'all the enforcement.
That's what I'm looking for.
So you can add, change that condition to the fencing shall be included on the as-built MOP, if you would like to make that motion?
I'll amend my motion to include adding the fence on the as-built, adding that extra drawing.
Okay. So you amended your motion and the second was?
Are there any, is there any further discussion before y'all do that? John, you made the original motion.
Yes, I did.
Are you amending your motion?
Yes, I am.
And can you please restate it?
Okay, I move, we approve SD 23.06 final plat approval, subject to the fence around the pond being added to the final plat and staff condition number three.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, passes.
Hunter, off the record, remind me, ask you a question about insurance on, on those kind of liabilities of the ponds, just like a pool in the backyard. Like if a kid falls in and drowns.
Sure.
That kind of thing.
You want to introduce the next one?
Before we get into, this is all later down the road.
Yeah, I think there's, there's a lot of opportunities to clarify stuff in the regs and maybe we need to have in the future, have some, have a working, work session or have some formal subcommittees.
Sure.
To work on stuff like that.
And I think you'll, you'll see over the next, course of the next year or two with some of the jurisdictional things we're doing tonight, there will be more of a marriage between the zoning ordinance and the subdivision regulations. It's going to be possible to do that overnight, so we're going to have to, and that will offer us some opportunities that maybe we haven't had to, to make the two regulations marry up a little bit better. So I think we'll, that's certainly something we can look at. It's been on our list for a couple of years to try to clarify exactly how do you codify some of the things you see, good design and hey, this one kind of missed the mark and why, but how do you codify that? It is always a tough thing to accomplish, so. We will certainly, and I think you will see a couple of meetings, we're going to look at some form-based codes this month and some parking, starting some parking conversation or zoning regulations, but certainly start those conversations.
Okay. I didn't realize this was a public hearing as well, so we are opening up a public hearing, or we're not, we're, Hunter's introducing these various proposed amendments to our subdivision regs.
Yes, and we've talked about this for a few months and just didn't meet the deadlines. You know, there's, I will say, there's not a lot of teeth that changes our actual requirements of these regulations. The majority of these changes are due to implying our subdivision regulations outside the city limits. So when we made those changes, these are an effect of that, those, that resolution that we passed. So, and while we were there, we cleared up some, sometimes subdivider was capitalized, sometimes it wasn't, clearing up some of those things. So while you do have a 86 pages of redlined documents, there's not a lot of intent being changed with these amendments. So, you know, it's pretty simple, again, we can get into the weeds of subregs and spend all night talking about it, but I think it's best to attack some of those things, a little bit more of a piecemeal fashion, or we'll never get something adopted. So our goal here was to have something that could be adopted and a narrow focus, even though it's a lot of red lines. We've got some examples here, but I'm not putting 86 pages on the screen in front of you, but just some of the examples where it's talking about jurisdiction and what we're doing. There is one change I want to, want to share with you, but, you know, probably the only thing tangible, it's, it's in our agreements, it's everywhere, but we want to make sure that anyone that submits an application to us understands, we have one entity we hold accountable. That's the subdivider as defined in our regulations. Doesn't matter what, who's their authorized agents, who's contractor, who's doing this. There's a subdivider that follows a project and they are the responsible entity for a project. If they sell it to someone else, they, that ton should be handed off. So we did clarify this section here, just to, to help people understand that better. It's peppered through the regulations, it's all in our, it's in our agreements, but just to resolve any misinformation that's out there. Just more examples, we can look at these in detail if you'd like. I do, this is the only thing that's changed from your packet. So we do have in Article 5, Section C, a general applicability. It is, as you see on the screen, is the way you revise, you see the amendment and, you know, after looking at this a lot, we realized that what this generally says is where we're working within the city limits. But there will be some projects that are in the city corporate limits of Fairhope, but the budding road is a county maintained road. So we wanted to leave a little bit of the information there, when it's a county maintained road, they may have regulations. Because again, in big picture, when we're in unzoned, it was the more restrictive of the two regulations, city or Baldwin County, applied. That kind of goes away when we're just dealing with the city limits, but when it's a road, a maintained road that is Baldwin County, we need to keep that. So the revised, we still struck the first sentence, but just added, when lands proposed to be subdivided lie within the corporate limits of the city, but, a but, county maintained rights of way, then this is when the city engineer and the more restrictive of ordinance. That was the, the main change from what you see in your packet. The rest of the, you know, it's dealing with those lands inside the corporate limits versus outside. More of the same, but that's, that is what you saw, we had it in the packet and did email you the whole document. If y'all have any questions on any of these specifically, we can certainly talk about them. Whatever, what I ask you not to do is anything that's not proposed here, let's save that for another day. So if we need to talk about ponds or something like that, or close this case, then we can stay all night and talk about it, but as far as what these regulations amendments are, I'd ask we, we focus on that.
It seems pretty narrowly focused. Does anybody have any questions or discussion?
I do have one request and just kind of, and I read through all 86 pages for you too, just so you know. On the floodway, where it gives the definition, it currently lists the flood insurance study. If we can, I'd like to revise that to be the national flood insurance rate map firm. The flood insurance study is the engineering data and it shows the cross-sections of how that map is done, but the floodways are actually shown on the firms.
Okay.
Because I pulled our flood study for our latest map and just wanted to verify. Flood study is usually a booklet with the engineering, the flood map is actually what delineates the lines, so if we could refer to it. And that actually ties back into our flood damage prevention ordinance language as well.
Eric, can you help me out? And I apologize, we have to get page numbers in, these are separate documents, so when we pull it all together.
It's in Article 2 under definitions of floodway. And one of the things it says, it's, gives the definition in subsection A, floodways are identified or delineated in the flood insurance study for Baldwin County. And I'd like if, to tie in with our ordinance, if it says national, the firms for Fairhope, Alabama, because we have our own designation through FEMA as a community and since we are no longer in the county, we're not operating under any more Baldwin County maps.
What's firm stand for?
Firm is flood insurance rate map.
So absolutely, let's do that. We need to be very specific, though, instead, we could, we could pass this as it is and come back with another amendment to be specific, but if you wouldn't mind, would you redline yours?
Sure.
So that a motion could be made with that specific language?
Yeah, I'm good.
That would be helpful.
Or maybe you could make the motion.
Okay, well, unless anybody has any other questions.
A condition to amend the definition of floodway to include one phrase in lieu of what's existing.
Sure, and I'll make the motion. If there's any other comments before we do that.
Jack's going to wait until we.
Oh, you're going to wait till, wait till the second. Okay, I will make a motion to accept the amendments with the provision that the definition of floodway in Article 2, in subsection A, being the, the language be included, that the floodways as identified in the current flood insurance rate map, in parentheses, firm, that's the term they use. rate map, in parentheses, firm, that's the term they use, published for Fairhope, Alabama.
Do you have a second?
I'll say.
All right, all in favor?
Discussion? Discussion?
Waiting for you.
You didn't look like anything was bubbling up.
Yeah, you got to read them.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Thank you. Do we have to move to adjourn? Do we have a motion to, I mean, you think I would remember this after six years, okay? I move that we adjourn.
Second.
All right. Oh.
We never have discussion about adjournment.